Be given by Pastor Dwight Benoit of Magnolia Baptist Church. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and please stand if you so choose for our nation's flag and prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me greet you and greet each of the council for this privilege and opportunity to pray with you at the start of a new year. I'm so grateful to have this privilege because this is the first day in the month of February that we celebrate an experience that's not everyone's experience, Black History. And I want to just encourage all of us with the words of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. He said that we're not makers of history, but we are made by his story. And if we can just hold on to that, Beaumont will continue to be what Beaumont is. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, with soul humility and reverence, do we approach your throne of grace? Thank you for our mayor, Ms. Robin Mouton, council member-at-large, Mr. A.J. Turner, council member-at-large pastor, Mr. Randy Fashaw, council members, Mr. Taylor Neal, Mr. Mike Getz, Mr. Audwin Samuels, Mr. Charles Durisso, our newly appointed city attorney, Ms. Sherei Reed, city manager, Mr. Kyle Haynes, and financial officer, Mr. Todd Bobinow, city clerk, Ms. Tina Broussard, and the various leaders from commissioners to chief, from judges to adjudicates, from counselors to every child that seeks to be nurtured by men and women who are godly examples. For thy art good, and none is better. We gather for another city council meeting, another positive reflect on our city of Beaumont and our communities, embracing unity, protect us, joy from within and without, growth in truth and prosperity for all, and the urgency to fulfill your divine purposes, love thy neighbor as thyself. We ask this in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus the Christ, we ask and we pray. Amen, amand, and amen.
Please join us in our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Fashaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal. Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we have one proclamation, Campus Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas, and accepting will be Jeremy Raely, administrator, campus coordinator. And I would like to say if anyone have a public comment, now's the time for any citizen who wish to speak. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the front of the room to our city clerk. She will call your name. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on at the start of your three minutes, and the red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
Mayor, are we going to do the proclamation, or we normally do the proclamation and then go into public comments?
I can do the proclamation first. Thank you. Whereas Campus Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas is a program under the umbrella of Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas, and whereas Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas started in 2018, the program now encompasses eighteen public and private high school campuses in Jefferson, Orange, and Harding Counties, with high school enrollment of nearly eighteen thousand students, including all three campuses in the Beaumont Independent School District. Whereas Campus Crime Stoppers gives students a means to report campus violence as well as criminal activities, both on campus and those committed by students off campus, without fear of reprisal due to guarantee and amenity. And whereas after only three complete years on campuses throughout the Golden Triangle, the Campus Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas was selected by the state office to host the twenty-sixth Annual Texas Crime Stoppers Campus Conference, February seventh through the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, in Beaumont. Now therefore, I, Robin Mouton, mayor of the city of Beaumont, do hereby recognize on this first day of February, two thousand and twenty-one, Campus Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas in Beaumont, and thank them for all the good work they do in our community. Accordingly, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed, signed Mayor Robin Mouton, on this day, February the first, two thousand and twenty-two. And if Mr. Jeremy Raely, administrator, campus coordinator, please come forward and bring anyone you have with you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you all very much for recognizing this very, very dedicated program for our school districts. With me, I have retired Beaumont police officer Al Johnson and Nick Hunter. They're part of our board at this time. You know, also, it wouldn't be possible for us to do what we do without the schools cooperating and allowing us to come on the campuses and to teach the students exactly what they can do to prevent crime, bullying, and other things inside the campuses. We have too many things that have happened across our state, you know, and across this country, to just look the other direction. But luckily, we have even others like Ms. Carol Riley here, who's the coordinator for BPD, just right here in Beaumont, that works very closely with us. So, thank you all very much for recognizing us, and we're going to put Beaumont on a good part of the map next week.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for the work that you're doing, Jeremy. We appreciate you.
I don't have anyone that wants to speak, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call for motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second? Have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
With regard to the request to approve the final payment on Washington Boulevard, Mr. Semino, can you tell us what the total project cost for Washington Boulevard?
So, the total budget for that project was thirty-four point nine million. Thirty point two million was going to be paid out of airport royalty revenue, and the remainder was going to be paid out of streets and drainage and the water fund.
So, the total, have we come in under budget, or over budget, or on budget?
In looking at it right now, even including this final payment that you're authorizing today, we should come in, unless there's anything else, any other work that needs to be done, we should come in maybe two hundred thousand under budget.
So, thirty-four million?
Right.
All right, thank you.
The only one thing to add, though, we have not put Washington and Eleventh into normal operation as a signal due to the railroad's preemption, so we still have to do some preemption construction a bit there before we're completely finished. Thank you.
Councilmember Duryo.
Two things on item D. I noticed that we buy these chemicals periodically, we have contracts, most of the time it's for six months, and then the reason why we just do it for six months, would it be less expensive if we get like a one-year contract, or do they change from time to time?
Right now, with the market the way it is, prices fluctuate pretty much day to day, so we try to lock in a short-term contract, because if you lock in a long-term contract, when there's such volatility going on, they'll end up bidding more on the project. So, our experience is that we try to do it a short increment of six months, and if the price hasn't changed much over that six months, we'll renew the contract.
Sure? Go ahead.
Item D on the bridge going into the landfill, when that work is being done, will at any time have to close down the landfill? Is that the only way in and out?
They're starting this week, either today or tomorrow. It'll be about eight to ten days. All the work will occur under the bridge and will not have any closures.
That's it? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a parking lot expansion for a church in an RCR, Residential Conservation Revitalization, and RS, Residential Single Family Dwelling District, for property located at twenty-one seventy Renard Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Mount Calvary Missionary Baptist Church submitted the request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request, with one condition that's listed in your staff report, and the administration recommends approval as well with that same condition.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion?
So moved to approve with the distant conditions.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, who's second?
Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have a reading of item number two, please?
Item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a roll-off container and equipment storage yard in a GCMD, General Commercial Multi-Family Dwelling District, for property located at thirty-four ninety-four Fennett Road in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Raymond Richard submitted the request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with three conditions listed in the staff report. In addition, Mr. Richard is requesting a waiver to the screening requirement. The administration recommends approval with the same three conditions and the screening waiver.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two, please. May I have a motion?
So moved for approval with the conditions and the waiver for the screening requirements.
I have a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a veterinarian boarding slash grooming facility and shelter in a GCMD, General Commercial Multi-Family Dwelling District, for property located at forty-two seventy East Lucas Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Kelly Hayes submitted this request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with the three conditions listed in the staff report. The administration recommends approval with the same three conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion and a second for the approval?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number four, please?
Item number four is an ordinance entitled an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow additional parking and to add a commercial strip center with a tax office and barber shop in an RCR, Residential Conservation Revitalization District, located at thirteen twenty-five College Street, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Rosa Enzifuentes Francisco Castillo submitted the request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with the five conditions listed in the staff report. The administration recommends approval with the same five conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four with five conditions. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Item number five is also an ordinance entitled an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow additional cabins in a recreational vehicle park in an LI, Light Industrial District, located at sixty-eight sixty South Major Drive, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Hidden Lake RV Park submitted this request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with the two conditions listed in the staff report. The administration recommends approval with the same two conditions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number six, please?
Item number six is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a bar in a GCMD, General Commercial Multi-Family Dwelling District, for property located at eighty-one eighty East Tex Freeway, Unit Two, in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Baptiste Brunner submitted the request, and at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-four, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number six. May I have a motion, please?
So moved for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
I see a special use permit. Are there any specifics of which permit would it be? Would it be beer and wine? Would it be the full alcohol permit?
So, Chris Boone's not in today, but we have a senior planner, Adina Josie, who might be able to answer that question.
Could you please come to the mic? Thank you. I don't remember exactly what the alcohol license application stated, but I do, if I understand correctly, it's for beer, well, I mean beers, wine-based daiquiris is what he is selling at this time.
Thank you. That's all. I just wanted to clear the, which alcohol license it actually was. Thank you.
I don't remember the code.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number seven, please?
Item seven is to consider approving a contract with PFP Abatement Group LLC out of Houston for the asbestos abatement of the structure located at five-five-five Main Street. Twelve vendors were solicited for bids, nine bids were received. PFP Abatement Group LLC provided the low qualified bid in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents, with sixty calendar days to complete the work. Funds are budgeted in the capital plan, and the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number seven. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Getz.
There's a large spread between the low bidder and the high bidder. Do we have any reason to understand why there's such a discrepancy?
Normally, we don't follow up with the bidders to find out what the differences are. Keith, have you heard anything on that?
Yes, I reached out to the vendor after the bids came in, just to kind of feel them out and make sure they felt comfortable with their bid because of the spread, and the gentleman had no issues, felt comfortable with it. He did tell me he has his own transport license, so he's able to save some money at that point. So, I'm assuming by that he's cutting corners on it and saving a little bit of money. But he's comfortable with his bid. I'm sure he assured me of that.
Is it also true that we're going to have to hire somebody to monitor his abatement of asbestos? Is that an additional expense that the city's going to have to incur?
Yes, and that'll be on, that'll be coming to before you on next week's agenda.
And does, is there an engineering estimate as to what that project should go for?
The abatement portion?
Not the abatement portion. We've got a contract that we're going to vote on on that, but the monitoring.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact number, but it'll be coming forth next week.
And then after that, is it true that we're going to have to put out another request for proposals for demolition of the project, and that's going to be done in two separate phases, one for the building itself and one for the grounds? Is that the way that's going to work?
Yes, we're currently working on that. Hopefully, get that to council, to purchasing by the eleventh of February, and we will bid the, we'll bid them simultaneously, then I'm going to bid the abatement, I mean, the demolition and the dirt work separately. Reason I'm doing that is, you know, try to give us the best advantage. Some demolition contractors do not like to do dirt work, and then some dirt work contractors don't do demolition, so I'm trying to get the best advantage for the city.
So, the current plan is to take out the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Wilson, but I do want to add this. I was opposed to the city buying this building or participating in it at auction. I was opposed to the city purchasing the building from the previous owner. I remain opposed to the city spending any taxpayer dollars for demolition of this building, and I won't be supporting this.
Councilmember Turner.
The original quote that came in, how much was it? I mean, the projected quote.
On the abatement?
On the abatement, yes, sir.
We were anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood around five is what the consultant had given us.
So, five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, this bid is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly cheaper than the five hundred thousand that was, we were projected to kind of look at.
Yeah, and as you probably, I think you got the bid tabulation, so it's, the next one was, I think, second bidder was three hundred and something thousand, so he's not too far off from that second bidder.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what we kind of projected as an expense versus what the actual results came out to be. Just wanted to clarify that.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Fashaw.
Just curious, what's the projection on him starting the abatement?
I'm going to say probably the time we go through the award process and he gets all his paperwork in, we could be probably four weeks, that, give or take.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no? But the motion carries. Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employees in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of the government code to which specifically the city council were in review the following individuals for the interim city manager position, Bart Markoviac, Chris Boone, Chris Catalina, and Earl White. Now it's a time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to do so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. She will call your name at the beginning of your three minutes, the green light will come on, and at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on.
I have Ashley, and I'm not really sure how to pronounce the last name, so I won't try. It's seventy-six fifty-nine Boardwalk, Lumberton, Texas. What's the last name?
Broaches is a Dutch.
Okay.
This is Tera Park Staples. In this time of incredible stress for everyone, the community of Beaumont and its surrounding area needs a place where both children and adults can relax and do things together, and Tera Park Riding Staples provide just that place. When Tera Park Riding Staples had the lighted Christmas parade, my mom and I saw both adults and kids decorating their horses with Christmas lights and other decorations. We both enjoyed seeing the children and adults ride their decorated horses through the park. From the random times that I have been to the Staples, I have seen all the horses being humanely treated, and when they are ill, are nursed back to health under a veterinarian supervision. Also, from the random times that I have been to the Staples, everyone's safety is looked after as well. One of the horses that many rode at Staples was a purebred Arabian that the current operators rescued from being slaughtered, and I know that the current operators had him for the last five years of his life. He lived at Staples until his death at about the age of thirty-two. Many students and their first, had their first lessons on him, and he was also calm enough and many rode him on public trail rides. Tera Park Riding Staples has helped a local horse rescue continue to rescue horses from the slaughter, and Staples still have horses that were rescued and are being used for lessons and public trail rides. I have volunteered at Staples during public events like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, Boys and Girls Club, Winter Warrior Project, and Play Days. Play Days are events where the public can have a fun time showing off their horses and their running skills without the huge cost of showing. Tera Park Riding Staples had obstacle course challenges that helped everyone's horsemanship and the horses be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I will open the floor for councilmember comment, and I'm going to start with you, councilmember Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel?
No comment.
Councilmember Fashaw?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Today is February first, first day of Black History Month. I encourage everyone to get out and celebrate and support some black-owned businesses. It's a very historic thing for the community, things they have took for it, so if everybody can get out and support, you know, some black-owned businesses of Black History Month, it'd be very well appreciated. And thanks for all the icons and the legends and the people who came before us that actually paved the way for where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
No comment.
Councilmember Duryo?
Yes, I would just like to ask all of y'all, my mother, Mary Duryo, is in ICU at Baptist Hospital, and I asked y'all to keep my mom and my family in our prayers. It's not looking very good right now. My family and I are going to have to make some hard decisions coming up, and I would just ask for your prayers. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Duryo. We will keep you in our prayers. I would also like to say today is February first, the first day of Black History. I am sitting in a I am sitting in a Black History moment, and I would also like to say congratulations again to our other history-making city attorney. But we have a full month of Black History, so please get out, participate. There's so many activities that's going on throughout the month. My schedule is full and packed. I think I will probably be at every school in the city. And so, if y'all see me running with tennis shoes on, I can still run just a little bit. But it is, it's a full month, but I'm excited about all of the activities that are going on for the month of February and to celebrate Black History. At this time, I'm going to ask our new city attorney if she has any comments. Thank you. And also, Todd Semenow, our chief financial officer, because our city manager is out. You have any comments? Well, it is two oh one, and we are finished with our regular meeting, and we will recess the executive session. And Pastor Ben Ward, thank you so very much for the wonderful prayer. Thank you. Thank you for coming.